She was worried about snow on the sidewalk we talked about.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Okay, beginning of new meeting, calling the pledge with a public hearing to consider local law to amend section 1, 324-19 of the village code to provide restrictions for parking and standing vehicles in village parking lots and property. Reading proof of publication.
Notice is hereby given that pursuant to section 7-706 of the village law of the state of New York, in pursuant to resolution of the village board of Village Baldwinsville adopted December 15th, 2022, a public hearing will be held by the village board at Village Hall, 16 West Genesee Street, Baldwinsville, on the fifth day of January 2023 at 7:30 PM to consider a proposed local law to amend section 324-19 of the village code to provide restrictions for parking and standing vehicles in village parking lots and property. A copy of the proposed local law may be examined by any interested party at the office of the village clerk. At the time and place of the hearing, all interested persons will be given an opportunity to rehear.
Thank you. There is no one in attendance, so I assume there's no one speaking in favor of the proposal and no one speaking against it. That motion adjourned to close the public hearing.
Make a motion.
Second.
Hang on, hang on one second, just to make sure that she's not.
Oh, okay.
She's back.
She doesn't know we're waiting.
No. Sally, do you want to make any comments regarding the proposed change of the local law that we just?
I'm sorry, I was out, my blood sugar was hanging, I had to go eat something. I didn't hear.
It's a, it's a local law affecting, providing restrictions for parking and standing in village parking lots or on village property. In the law, we restrict how long vehicles can be there, for one thing.
I don't know, is it a problem?
It is for us, yes. You don't, you're not obligated to say anything.
No, I'm just, from a person who lives in the village, I know that if someone's having like driveway work done or something, it's really hard for them to put their car somewhere.
You would have three days to move the car.
And I don't think this restricts.
It's designed for long standing.
Oh, okay.
Vehicles, because there are some people who will store their vehicles.
Gotcha.
For months in some of our lots.
That makes sense, I was just thinking of the people who, you know.
Yes, yes.
Or they're.
Really issue during winter time to follow.
Yeah.
Right.
And frankly, they can move it around, it doesn't have to be, I mean, if they park it in one spot and just leave it there for more than three days, that's when it's a problem.
I thought we were turning into a no parking ever kind of.
No, it's not that.
That would be good.
Okay.
Thanks for asking.
Now, is there anybody?
I think we had a first and second.
Did they vote, anybody opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, then adjourn the public meeting. The next meeting will commence at 7:45, so we'll move into the agenda on the regular board meeting. Can we have approval of the village board meeting minutes from December 15th, 2022?
Move.
Second.
Any corrections or additions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Item A, resolutions to certify, these are resolutions that we voted on by email and this is going to certify them. They were voted on Wednesday, December 21st, 2022, resolution 205/2022 was moved by trustee Collins, seconded by trustee Stebbins, resolved to receive the bids for the tree removal and trimming work project on Wednesday, December 21st, 2022 at 2:00 PM. That passed. And resolution 206/2022, moved by trustee Stebbins, seconded by trustee Collins, resolved to award the bid for the tree removal and trimming work project to Stumpfusters of Central New York LLC in a bid amount of $17,400. Could I have a motion to certify those resolutions?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Item two, public comment. Anything? Okay, anyone else? Apparently not. Okay, moving to trustees' comments. Ruth.
Oh, well, just to say happy new year to everybody and sticking to the agenda, even that.
And now I'm going to move to Meg.
I was going to say the same things, happy new year and I'll stick to the agenda.
Mike?
The agenda's fine.
I'm mixing it up.
Nate?
Yeah.
Um, I have one thing I want to say. You know, it's been, it's been a few years of, of this social media and everything going on when you're looking at Facebook, you're looking at Instagram, and you see a lot of negative things on Facebook. You see a lot of negative things on Instagram. Well, the past 72 hours, I've seen nothing but positive, awesome things towards Damar Hamlin. And I think it's awesome that we as a country have come together to really support him, you know, I'm biased because I'm a Bills fan, so the Buffalo Bills, but the Cincinnati Bengals and, and pretty much anybody that's really like been hurt, to be honest with you. And it's, and it's awesome that everybody galvanize themselves and, and, you know, with each other and, and really made Facebook and Instagram and everything like a lot more pleasant to, to look at, to be honest with you, because it was so positive the past 72 hours. And, and I'm just, I'm, I'm proud of everybody, really I am. So I just wanted to bring it out there and I'm glad that he's recovering, I'm glad that he's, he's got a long road ahead of him, but I'm glad that he's recovering, I'm glad that he's, you know, he's fighting and, and it's, it seems to be going in a positive direction. But I just wanted to bring that out there and don't really want to spend too much time on it, but yeah, that's, that came on my mind and I'm, you know, I'm, I'm happy for, for how it turned out, so. You know, with a, with a terrible situation that happened Monday night, so. And with that, I'll stick to the agenda.
Well said, Nate, I'll stick to the agenda.
Guess that brings it back to me. I'd like to add an item under new business, item C, I guess it'd be, motion to authorize, and I don't know who, this could be, help me here. The engineer wants us to get authorization for going out to bid for the water plant and fluoride, electrical and fluoride work. We thought we needed to authorize him doing that.
To go out for bid.
Okay, so who am I authorizing? Who is motioning to authorize? The village clerk? Okay, well, whatever, you pick the words.
He sent the email, so do you hear that with you?
Not with me, no. Well, I have the email, yes, I can turn my phone on.
Good motion.
So.
So you're.
I'm making that motion, so we need a second.
So authorize submit.
Yes.
Oh, we're just adding it to the agenda.
We're adding it to the agenda.
I'll make the motion when I get around to it.
Okay.
Remind you.
Okay.
Because I didn't write it down.
I will write it down for you.
Where are we, timelines?
You got five.
Okay, well, we have time for the mayor's comments. Five minutes, you have five minutes.
A note to our business, a couple of business items. First of all, we did, we, we had two rounds of Main Street grants for businesses and county has authorized another round. The deadline originally was January 13th, but I think because of the fact that it ran through the holidays, a lot of people didn't get much work done on that part of the project. So they're now extending it to January 27th. So if any of the businesses in our community in the village are interested in getting some facade work done, get a hold of the code's office and find out how to fill out an application. And if you look around the village, you've seen a lot of people took advantage of it. We had, at one point, I think we had 29 total businesses over the first two rounds. Doesn't leave too many businesses left with work to do, but it's a good chance for those maybe were a little slow on the draw or weren't sure how they were going to come out of COVID to now think this is a time that they might want to do some work, so call the code office. Another business thing is the, the chamber, nominations for the 2022 Business Person of the Year. If you have nominations, contact the chamber, they'll tell you how to fill out a form to nominate somebody. And we've got a lot of great businesses and there's obviously some people behind those businesses. And I'm going to leave, the next item will be up to Bob because he'll have more time. But we're going to discuss the fact that the state is authorizing municipalities to give tax breaks on property taxes to first responders. So I've asked Bob to give us just a quick synopsis of what that will mean. I don't know if it's mandatory or if it's optional. Again, I'll leave that to Bob, but I'll just give you a heads up on that. And I echo Nate's sentiments on the ballgame the other night, I thought everybody handled it very well. It was, it was a tough situation. And here's, just in case you don't follow sports too much, this guy had a, a GoFundMe account to buy Christmas presents for needy kids and he asked for $2,500 a year to do that. It's now like seven million dollars that people have pledged. Seven million dollars that people were so touched by this whole situation. Just echoing what Nate was talking about, a lot of goodness coming out of people's hearts. And I wish nothing but the best for that young man. I hope he recovers and I don't care if he plays football again, I just hope he recovers and has a nice life. And that's all I got.
Kind of need him.
Okay. Is there a department that thinks they could do what they have to do in two minutes?
Oh, I can.
Well, then we'll go to the village clerk.
All right, I just wanted to, after the PBA settled their contract, so I had to do some retro pay. I just wanted to make you aware that the total amount for the retro pay is $97,600. So that will be done at the next payroll, so I'm sure Mark will have a budget modification next time for that amount.
Okay.
But it might not be all of that, correct?
Pardon?
The budget modification may not be the entire settlement amount.
Right, depending on.
Okay. 30 seconds.
Two minutes, I got two minutes.
I still got two minutes on my clock.
I have nothing else to ask.
Come on, somebody ask Mike a question so he can use his two minutes.
All right, I'll go fast.
It's like a game.
Happy new year, and if you're an older adult in Baldwinsville, you've never come into the senior center, make this your year to do that. If you're looking to increase your wellness and fitness level, we have several fitness programs specifically designed for older adults, so come in and check that out. You can find all of our information on the Village Baldwin'sville website as well as each of the town's websites.
Thank you.
I have a dumb question.
You've got time.
I do, well, I'm going to ask it. Don't let the white here fool you, but how, what is considered a senior?
For the, our purpose is it 60 or older?
Got a couple of years yet.
Like, just, just a few, not too many. Okay.
But there's other people in the room that qualify.
But if someone like Greg McDonald is shooting pool and you want to come as his guest, you can do that.
If you want to come as his guest, go ahead.
This is really good.
He is good.
I don't think he's teammate, I won't play against him.
I have one minute. Next on the agenda is going to be a public hearing to hear comments regarding the Restore New York program application. Did that get us through?
Yep.
Be careful, don't use all your stuff.
That was a nice teaser you got there.
My clock says 7:44 too, I hate to have somebody walk in. Because Mike will point out.
Read it really slow.
We're 7:45.
Why did we do 15 minutes between each one of these?
We could go back out though.
Okay.
Wait a minute. Do I have to finish my thing? You wrote typed up here or no? No, okay, reading proof of publication, we'll go right to that.
The Village of Baldwinsville will hold a public hearing on January 5th, 2023 at 7:45 PM at the Village Hall for the purpose of hearing public comments on the village's application and property assessment list for Restore New York grant funding on behalf of the proposed project at the site comprising 14 Curtis Ave, 51 Salina Street, 53 Salina Street rear, 53 Salina Street, 55 Salina Street, 56 Curtis Ave rear, 80 East Genesee Street, 88 East Genesee Street, 90 East Genesee Street, sorry. Ah, 90 East Genesee Street, 92 East Genesee Street, 96 East Genesee Street and 98 East Genesee Street. The 2223 state budget provided new funding for the Restore New York's Communities Initiative and gave Empire State Development the responsibility of implementing this program for the sole purpose of revitalizing urban and rural areas, disadvantaged communities and stabilizing neighborhoods. Municipalities are invited to submit a request for funding proposal for projects to demolish, deconstruct, rehabilitate and/or reconstruct vacant, abandoned, condemned and surplus properties. The Village of Baldwinsville submitted an intent to apply form on behalf of the redevelopment project at the site comprising the above addresses. The Village Hall is accessible to persons with disabilities. If special accommodations are needed for persons with disabilities, those with hearing impairments or those in need of translation from English, those individuals should contact the village clerk at 315-635-3521 at least one week in advance of the hearing date to allow for necessary arrangements. Written comments may also be submitted until January 4th, 2023 to the village clerk.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposal? Anyone wishing to speak against?
I'm going to clear what exactly the issue is, like, are they tearing down properties? Are they wanting to build properties or?
This is allowing a developer to apply for a grant to help fund redevelopment of a site.
Okay. And what do they want, or is that?
That project is not there yet.
There's a thing that's ready to go or?
No, they can't, they, they're knocking ideas around, they'll develop that.
Okay.
That hasn't gone anywhere, you know, like planning board or anything, no.
I just wanted to make sure it was us.
This is trying to secure funding.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And it's a site that used to be a foundry, it's not, it has issues.
Yeah, I, I would also point out that this grant is not available for vacant property. It's only buildings which have, that, well, except for, for Brownfield. It's for buildings that need to be demolished or rehabilitated or whatever, so. For example, we've had recently, as you're aware, an application for a development at a particular site that has no buildings on it. That site would not be eligible for this kind of grant.
Kind of a motion to adjourn and close the public hearing?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried, closed. We'll now resume the regular meeting for another 11 minutes. Moving on to our attorney.
As the mayor mentioned, the, the state of New York has adopted a legislation involving the ability of municipalities other than counties to offer tax exemptions to volunteer fire, firemen and ambulance drivers. As you may be aware, the, you can get veterans exemptions, for example, and amplified veterans exemptions on real estate, real property tax for someone who's been performing or served in a combat zone. And that's been for a long time and municipalities have had the option to, to grant those exemptions, those partial exemptions. This is the same type of thing. And what it does is, is allows the village as a municipality to grant a partial exemption, not to exceed 10% of the assessed value of the property. So that if someone has assessed value of property at $100,000 and we were to grant that exemption, their assessed value for village tax purposes would be $90,000. There are requirements that are set forth in the state law and also requirements that the village can impose. For example, the property has to be owned by the first responder. It's got to be the primary residence of the first responder. It's got to be used exclusively for residential purposes. And they have to reside, the first responder has to reside in the, the Village of Baldwinsville. And they're served by that, the volunteer fire department for which he's serving. The, they have to be certified as an enrolled member. They, there has to be a minimum service so that the, the first responder will have to, have served in that capacity for a period of time which can be determined by the village board, anywhere between two and five years. So that's something that you would set if you, if you go forward with that. There are also other provisions in the law that, that would allow the village to grant certain lifetime exemptions for people who have served for more than 20 years. Exemptions for an unmarried spouse of a, of a enrolled member, first responder who was killed in the line of duty and unrespare, also for the unmarried, unremarried spouse of a retired first responder. So there are some options that the board has if you want to, to adopt this and grant this partial tax relief to first responders residing in the village and owning property in the village. There are some, you can go to the NICOM web address as well to get some other information on that, but.
Is there anything, state guidelines regarding activity of the individual on a roster but doesn't really actively participate? So many hours a year or something, did they give any guidelines on that?
No, no, they don't have guidelines on that, but, so that, that's something, it would just, as I say, it would be, there, there have to be a certification that, by the, I think, I guess there are, there are guidelines that the state has out and that has to be certification as to that, so it can't be just a, a one day person. I can, I can send some things out. Again, it won't affect, we don't have to do anything right away on this because the taxable status date for the village is January 1st. So it, it wouldn't become effective until 2024 anyway, so we've got some time to work on it. So I can send things out if you'd like me to.
That'd be good.
Hey Phil.
Anything else?
And other than that, I'll stick with the agenda.
Okay. Six minutes, you or Mark?
No, I can go real quick. I just had a quick question for Bob too, on the, the first responder tax break. I think because it reduces the assessed valuation, the, the, there is no financial impact to the village out of pocket. It, the tax levy just gets spread differently across the tax base. So if you're, if the, the taxable base is less, then everybody.
It's not out of the village's pocket, it's out of.
That's correct, that's correct.
To make up the difference.
Right, so just if that impacts your decision. So I, I wanted to point out too, that on the agenda for tonight is the approval of purchasing a couple of vehicles for the DPW. I would encourage you to approve that. And it's two really, really necessary vehicles totaling about $350,000. They won't be delivered for about a year and at the time, as we get closer to that time, we will determine whether we either pay for that out of fund balance or whether we bond for that, or a combination of those two things. So I'm, I'm happy that we're on this road because we've got some more capital replacement planning to do for things like that going forward. And to Mike, to trustee Shepherd's point about the, the police settlement that will not completely impact the budget, because I think there's, off the top of my head, $30,000 or $40,000 left in the police salary line, I'm anticipating will be an overage, so that would help pay for that. And then there are some other lines that we can get some of that from, but probably half of it will affect fund balance, will come from fund balance. And that's it, unless there are questions.
Okay. Four minutes, you can't do it.
I can do it, I can do it. Water pump has been busy the last couple of weeks, they had a hydrant that had been replaced earlier Elizabeth from the night of street. Turned in much more than they thought it was going to be, it took a little bit of night to get it done. They had another breakout in the street, they had to go after, make up that. They had another one down the street last week also, I think that's taken care of. There's another, there's another hydrant that's both are leaking on Monca, they're going to take care of that next Tuesday, we hope. Also, the water meters, we're still trying to get the south side done. And we've been trying to get in these houses for three years and, and we're down to notifying the people and if they don't, we have to terminate the service. But we just can't get into the house, it's been three years again. Most people are great, so if they're getting letters now, they're saying if you don't contact us, we're going to terminate your water service, so just to put that out there.
How many are you talking? Ballpark, how many are you talking, stuff left?
On, on that side, there's probably another 60 we got to do.
Wow.
And it's just, it's difficult to get in some of the houses and.
Residents should understand, we're replacing.
Yes, I was wondering.
All of the meters in the village. The ones that were put in, were put in under Claude Sykes.
Twenty or thirty.
Decades ago, yeah.
And there's no, there's no, there's no class of homeowners, as long as they're plumbing.
And it's about 15 minutes.
Yeah, we're in and out and for most probably not many issues, but sometimes they have some water shut off issues and we just forget to, but if you can just let us know, that will be great. The highway, we're starting to take trees down this week, the big trees, the bed just went out, you can sign for that. So that'll be great, most we get that taken care of. We're out doing Christmas tree, picking Christmas trees up, please don't put them in plastic bags because we can't, we can't throw the plastic bags through the molder, that's always a problem. We're going to start taping down the Christmas lights now. We usually leave the, the snowflakes up till right after the plunge. But we're starting to take some of the other things down and it's perfect weather to do some of that stuff now. Other than that, the parks, community, or community park, perhaps I mentioned the community park, people are using the ball fields as dog parks and they're letting their dogs run in there and it's just making a mess. There are signs that said there's no dogs in there, but it's getting to be more and more of an issue every time they go up to the street for dogs and they're running around and, and it's just, it's not what the ball fields are. They like it because they're fenced in. So we do go up and ask them to leave and we do. Other than that, unless there's questions, I mean it.
Very good. Mike, if an officer is in community park and they see dogs, do they also roll their window down and say?
Certainly, well, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Turn my page over. Turn my page over. Install a little bit. We have another public hearing at eight o'clock to consider a proposed local law to override the property tax cap for the upcoming fiscal year. It is now eight o'clock. Could we have a reading of the proof of publication?
Okay. Notice is hereby given that pursuant to section 7-706 of the Village Law of the State of New York and pursuant to resolution of the Village Board of the Village of Baldwinsville, adopted December 15th, 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Village Board at the regularly scheduled meeting on the fifth day of January 2023 at 8:00 PM to consider a proposed local law to override the property tax cap for the coming fiscal year pursuant to the authority granted in subdivision 5 of general municipal law subsection 3-C. A copy of the proposed local law may be examined by any interested party by contacting the office of the village clerk.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed law? Anyone wishing to speak against it? Sir?
I'm just, I'm a local homeowner and I own three properties, one's vacant and two other properties. My taxes have been up and up due to assessments in the last couple of years. We're all with it. Additional, I happen to be additional. You know, my favorite office.
Somebody want to explain, or should we go?
The only thing, the only thing I want to say is that we, I want to just say...
That our budget for this coming year does not, we are not exceeding the tax cap. We, we have passed the law in case we make a mistake, and then we can say we had a law in place that allowed us to exceed it, but we don't typically do it as a matter of business, the course of business. So, but we are not exceeding the tax cap in New York State for this year.
How many times over the last 10 years?
Sir, sir, real quick, the mayor's probably not going to be able to hear you that well. If you don't mind stepping up to the microphone and talking, thank you.
Say your name again, too.
Introducing yourself to us.
My name's Eric Roper. And basically, what I was saying is, then over the last 10 years, how many times have you went over that?
I don't think I've...
Yeah, that's, I've only been treasurer for a year, so I can't really, okay.
But we've passed this law every year. It's a procedural matter.
I know, I've seen it before, and that's why I wanted to come down.
If we don't pass it, we could be penalized if something we're not anticipating happens. It could affect our ability to apply for state aid.
Okay. Well, that gives me a better idea of if you haven't done it over the last 10 years.
In years past?
You know, all of us are suffering from inflation.
In years past, correct me if I'm wrong, and I don't think I am, after we've realized what our budget is and what our number was, we've taken that back.
In another month or two. We might pull it right back off the...
It doesn't necessarily have to be taken off the table, and it very well may not, because if we do find that error seven months into the year and we rescinded it, then we're vulnerable again. So we may not rescind it this time, but all intentions were to stay below it and be over with it.
Right. And to your point too, and I'm not crying the blues to you, we were capped at 2% of the tax levy increase. And this year, especially, the same inflation that you feel, we feel, and it's, we had to get extremely creative in this budget. And so, but I, I'm a homeowner in the village too, and I appreciate what you're saying.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Hey, could I have a motion to adjourn and close this public hearing?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Back to the regular meeting. Greg is absent, so we don't have any codes. I think we've covered all department heads. Correct?
We don't have new business?
Moving on to pending business. We've got to do this slowly because we'll get ahead of ourselves.
I was going to say, you could do A through C. A through C.
Could I have a motion approving proposed local law to amend section 324-19 of the village code to provide restrictions for parking and standing vehicles in village parking lots and properties?
I'll make a move.
A second.
Discussion? Well, we know that this trustee feels that three days is too lenient, that 48 hours is more appropriate. However, I did talk to the attorney about our ability to live with something and go ahead and revise down the road, because there are other issues that we want to address at some point also. I don't know if anybody else has any concerns. I know that our superintendent of public works would like to see something that, in place that allows him the leverage to get vehicles moved.
If I may, one of our biggest issues are, we, it's not even cars that are there for a couple of days or months, months on end. We've had vehicles that are, that don't get moved for four or five months. We, in the past, we've had vehicles that have been here for two years because the people just don't want them, they don't want them in their driveway. So that's, and it's a plowing issue, you know, for the most part.
And if there was an issue with somebody's vehicle, sale used at all, an example of having something done and they had to put their vehicle, all they have to do is get a hold of the village government and talk to them. Talk to the clerk, talk to the superintendent, talk to the chief, so they know that this vehicle...
But this will really help us if we can, if we can get this.
From the police point of view, you know, I'm thinking about if somebody goes away for a weekend or something, you know, the three days, I think is reasonable. And to Chuck's point, you know, I know people have come, this board has come to me and Greg, and we're like, there's literally nothing in the code to deal with this. And we've got somebody, you know, remember that station wagon down there? And now we've got some teeth, something that we can deal with this, where some vehicle can't just sit there. And I think this is a huge step forward for the village.
We've literally had vehicles that have been there for months, and when we had them moved, they had to put a battery in it. Because they had no plans on moving them at all.
Those are all registered vehicles though, insured?
They are, yeah. You know, they register them, insure them and stuff, but then they just let them sit there. So...
And drive it down to the Kerry Park, Mercer Park.
Yeah, across the street, you're off River Street is where I'm thinking of. We have bad issues.
I think of that trailer load of kayaks that was out there for the longest time too.
So I think, I think this will really give us an ability to deal with this.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry. Let me check my clock. We're okay. Have a motion approving the Restore New York program application. These New York, Restore New York grants will fund, grant funds will support the site's redevelopment into a mixed-use district for commercial, retail, and residential use to benefit the Village of Baldwinsville residents.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Discussion?
Are we, are we actually approving the application?
That's what it says here.
Yeah.
Okay.
The application to apply for the grant.
Yes, we're now approving the grant.
Okay, let me ask, we're approving the actual application that we've never seen? Or we're approving the process allowing the developer?
Yes. The application has to be done by the 27th.
Okay, that's what I want to...
Yes.
Right.
That's what I was asking.
I thought so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Could I have a motion approving a proposed local law to override the property tax cap for the fiscal year 2023, 2024?
Make a motion.
Second.
Discussion? Eric, it's a, the state sets a 2%. I don't know if you're aware of that. They say you can't go beyond 2%. And then they've got all kinds of calculations that make it less than 2%. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Local law number two.
Carry. Now we are on recess.
We can do the new business.
Can we go to new business? Can we do that?
I think so.
Yeah, why not?
Robert's rules. Under new business, can we have a motion to approve the purchase of the following two DPW vehicles? The 2024 International HV 507 chassis with a Viking additional items, all items outlined in Anadag County Contract 8996 and attached quotes, total cost of $211,909.95, and a 2024 International CV with MDI additional items, all items outlined in Anadag County Contract on GOV 109-16 and attached quotes, total cost of $137,137,772. It's a mouthful.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second for discussion. Chuck, if you could just talk a little bit about the...
Including the vehicles it's replacing.
Yes. Right. The, the bigger truck, the $211,000 truck, it's replacing a truck that's just coming up on 20 years. And it's, that's, that's very old for a plow truck. And we're just having trouble, these trucks breaking down. There's, and the one next to that was, has almost 15 years on it, and we're getting in trouble. The biggest problem we have now is we can't get trucks. That bigger truck won't be here until '24. The smaller truck that we got, it's a mid-sized truck, and we can, we're hoping we can get that in, in 10 months, and that should, should really help us out. But our, our plow trucks just kind of snuck up on us, and they're, they're aging, and they sit and saw, you know, all winter. And the electric goes on them. One of the back of Sanders just rusted out the other day, and the whole drive just came off. And we, we got that repaired, but the, the trucks itself are not holding up like the old ones were. Normally, they try to replace these within 12, 12 to 15 years. One of our, one of our trucks are 15 years old, and we didn't realize it. It was raining the other day, and they had just pulled it out, and the roof had rusted out. Parts of the roof had rusted out where the salt sits during the winter. You know, we clean them all up, but they're just, they need replacing. And hopefully that, you know, we're going to need to get another year out of them. But it was, it was great that we were able to order these. And I thank Mark for his comments earlier.
That smaller one for parking lots, is that what that one?
No, no, they're road trucks, you know. And now, yep. And this one here is, we have a smaller truck, and this one's in between. And a lot of the towns are getting these now. They're one-man trucks. And they have Jagwings on them, so they have Jagwings and Sanders on them, so you can go out with these and you can do a lot of work with them. Even the smaller one we have, you can do a lot of work with them. But International came up with a mid, mid-size, and you can get it. That's the biggest thing. Now, even the Ford 550s, you can't get till '24. The bigger trucks can't get till '24. And it's just something that we really need, and we're going to be in trouble if we don't get some equipment in here for plowing. And a plow truck's a funny truck, lots of times it'll sit most of the year. And but when that's, when, but when it's, it's going, it's got to be on the road, and it's got to be working hard.
And follow up something that Mark said, we won't pay for these until they're delivered.
Correct, yes.
Price tags.
Yep.
We're not spending the money tonight.
Yep, they're all on state contract, and payment is due on delivery.
Either the big one, is that the 10, does that replace our 10-wheeler?
No, no.
Another item.
Yeah, the 10-wheeler's been replaced twice, it's 30 years old, and it just never got replaced. And it's, we're spending some money in maintenance now. But the plow trucks are just fantastic, we're able to do that.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Now you can go back to your last...
Do we think we can go to our fourth and final public hearing scheduled for 8:15 regarding the adoption of the proposed 2023, 2024 village budget? Have a reading of the proof of publication.
Please take notice that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Baldwinsville, County of Anadaga, State of New York, pursuant to resolution of the Village Board, adopted December 15th, 2022, will conduct a public hearing at the regularly scheduled meeting on the fifth day of January 2023 at 8:15 PM to hear comments regarding the tentative budget for the fiscal year beginning March 1st, 2023, and ending on February 28th, 2024. The compensation proposed in said budget for the mayor is $15,300 per year, $25,500 per year for the deputy mayor, $5,100 per year for each trustee, and $24,983 for the village justice. Copies of the tentative budget are available during normal business hours in the office of the village clerk on December 30th, 2022.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the budget? Anyone wishing to speak against the budget? Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carry. We return to pending business, which is the adopting of the proposed budget. Could I have a motion to adopt the proposed 2023, 2024 budget?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Discussion? Eric, do you have a copy of it? Do you have a copy of it?
Yeah.
Okay, if, I don't know if Mark wants to explain, you can see up on top the...
Some questions, when Greg going to get a new car?
Excuse me?
When Greg's going to get a new car?
If he sent you here.
Man.
That would, then our tax levy would go up then, Eric.
Yep.
So you tell Greg next time.
He's going to get a truck with a hole in the roof. That's what he's going to get. And a Tarp.
Yeah, he's already upgraded to that.
The bad news that Mark has explained to us is though, even though you see your tentative tax rate will decrease for Village because of the assessment you got hit by, and we all got hit by, we're all going to see tax increases. So...
I see the two.
Oh, I hear you. We live there.
I'd like to say, you know, a couple of things quick. I think, just so everybody realizes, we did keep in mind the situation with the economy while trying to balance what we need to run our ship, but to understand that the people out there are facing some hardships. So we, there's a lot of balance put into this budget. I give the board a lot of credit for the energy that you guys put into it. Appreciate all the department heads for trying to keep things as tight as possible. I think it's a pretty good budget. It's got, we didn't, we didn't kill things generally. We trimmed a few things here or there, and we're trying to be creative on how to provide some stuff. I give a lot of credit to Mark Baker for steering us along with where there were places that he could see, make some changes and moving money in other areas that were less painful for us. It's, it's the, to me, it's the toughest part of the year because you're talking about, you know, people's livelihoods. You've got to have the materials and the stuff to work with to do the things they've got to do. And again, I think this board did a good job of coming up with a good budget, and we'll just see what happens with the economy. And hopefully, things will straighten out, and some of the things that we had to trim won't hurt us so much. But the tax rate has gone down to $6.54 per thousand, which is about, what, 60 cents, 70 cents a thousand? Mark, help me out.
It says 65.
Yeah, 65. So, you know, that's, that's a big cut. You always hope it doesn't come back and bite us next year because we, I think as Bruce said, because of the assessments going up, it won't hurt us that bad. We'll still make the money we need to make to keep the budget going for the following year. So again, I want to thank the board for your hard work, and all the department heads for cooperating, and we got it done. Thank you.
Not yet, we haven't voted.
I want to just point out a couple of things too, that, you know, the, the, there is a lot of economically sensitive, or there's some economic sensitivity in the budget just inherently in this thing. We receive revenue from mortgage tax, and so when the rates go up in the mortgage market and mortgages go down, or in terms of originations, we may see a hit on mortgage tax. and mortgages go down, or in terms of originations, we may see a hit on mortgage tax. We, we see those kind of things get, if the state starts to have trouble with their budget for everything that they subsidize us with, then those things could be in jeopardy. At the same time, certainly employee, the employee retirement system has gone up this year, I think it was ten or twelve percent, the premiums. We, I know that, that Mo consistently works on keeping the health premiums down every year, health insurance premiums, and, and we have inflation just at seven or eight percent and so you, you have a natural employee, I don't want to call it demand because it's not like that, but there's an, a heightened interest by staff for pay. And so it's, I think we did justice to a lot of things in here, we reduced what was going to be a two hundred thousand dollar withdrawal from our fund balance down to, to eighty-five thousand dollars and a fifty thousand dollar contribution from the water fund, so those things help. But, you know, we'd like to not have to do that every single year.
Anything else anyone wants to add? If not, can I just vote? Just to, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Where are we?
New business B.
We have a motion to approve the discussed budget modifications.
Make the motion.
We just did that.
No, we didn't, we approved the village budget.
I'll second with a discussion from Mark with the budget modifications, please.
We had a first and a second to discuss, we're ready, I think.
I guess the first, Eric had the second.
Did you want me to talk about any of them in particular, or?
Just the general explaining of what it is.
Yeah, I tried to scale the, the report down, first of all, because as we get toward the end of the year, there's more, you know, little things that come up, but you know about that as we go down through it real quick, you know about the fact that we had a server failure that affected the court and the police department and that had to be replaced, that was unanticipated, I will tell you, at the same time, I think the server was ten years old. In the world I came from, that, that would have been on a scrap heap somewhere five years ago. The justice court audit is mandated by the state and it's mandated also that the mayor's budget pay for that, I think. We have some general operational things that, one was just a budgeting issue with this building, which, so that's a change there, and I don't think it's that we're keeping it any cooler in the summer or any hotter in the winter, I think it was just a number that wasn't where it needed to be. I am reducing the contribution for the insurance, or I am changing the insurance, we were taking the full hit for the insurance in the general fund, I still think we can pay for it partly from the sewer and the water fund, so that's, half of it is coming from sewer and water, a, a third from water, a third from sewer, is that right? No, a quarter from water and a quarter from sewer, and then the general fund will pay for half.
And that's because we had employees that worked for those departments and-
That, that is our basic liability insurance, so that also includes equipment, includes physical plant, those kind of things, so you can easily lay that off on the sewer and the water departments to say that they have a lot of the equipment that's, that could go and, or where somebody could get hurt, things like that.
Just want to kind of explain that, because when we say we're getting creative, we're not getting that creative.
Oh, yeah, no.
We're just allocating things where they really probably should have been all along.
I mean, if the water, if the water department were acting alone as a business, these expenses would, would be part of their profit statement.
Right, credit to Mark finding that, though.
We've talked about police overtime in the past, I think it's a function of staffing and of, of leaves that the police departments had, I don't know if you, if you have any other questions for Mike or if you want to talk about it more, Mike, but, and the, the state, the, the other big one down there is state retirement. This is the non-police retirement, the police retirement was like right on, and I do have a call to the state retirement system because they send us that number, and I think we went over this at the meeting, they send us the number a year ago to say, next February, this is what your bill's going to be. And then we get the bill and it was thirty-five thousand dollars more. And I said, I need to know what makes that happen. Is that retirements that occurred during the year? What, what kind of things make that happen that your estimate for us was off by that much? Is it the performance of the fund during the year or what is it? I, so, but I will get to the bottom of that, just because I, I personally want to know. Why does that happen?
So you reached out, but you haven't gotten an answer yet.
No, and in fairness, I just did it today.
Okay.
When I was doing this, I was like, oh, yeah, I got a contact.
You did talk about it, so.
And, and the changes, we, you know, we offset a number of these changes with recognizing back tax payments that have been made during the year as revenue so that we could use them, as opposed to just having to put them in the general fund. So.
Very well done, Mark, thank you.
So, that's the deal. And you'll have more of these next meeting probably, because they will come fast and furious now, from now to the end of the year.
I appreciate you doing that.
Yeah, thank you.
If there are no other questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none carried.
You have a motion.
You're reminding me.
I am reminding you.
Electrical upgrades, RFP authorization.
Say what?
Electrical upgrade, RFP authorization, is that what I had written?
Yes.
I'm going to make a motion to authorize the bids process for upgrading the water plants, electrical and fluoride work. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Is everybody on the board familiar with these products, works?
Yeah, kind of.
Fluoride is a grant, half of the electrical thing is a grant, the other half, we've got the money set aside for it. Been waiting how long?
It's been a couple of years to get some of the grants and, and out, get it together.
We started the water thing while Steve was here, so it's great to be able to get this out. The engineer says he anticipates-
Next week.
Being on, going out next week, he's got the, all the material for Mo. But, all in favor?
I'm looking at emails.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, carried. Have a motion to pay bills is audited.
Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those things to me, to the review.
Yes.
You've got an abstract, right?
Yeah, do we have to vote on this?
No.
Already signed them.
That's what the motion is, is-
Yeah. I thought it was the stuff we signed.
Pay bills is audited.
It's good bills.
Okay, then, could we vote on that?
Yes.
All in favor, aye, all opposed, none carried. Can I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting at eight twenty-eight? Chuck made the motion.
I will make the motion on behalf of Chuck.
I'll second, I'll let Bruce second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Eric Sully, thank you for coming tonight.